Please be seated, the sitting is open.
The court meets this morning and will meet in the coming days to hear the oral statements and comments on the request for an advisory opinion that the United Nations General Assembly submitted to the court on the question of the legal consequences arising from the policies and practices of Israel in the occupied Palestinian territory, including East Jerusalem. I shall now recall the principal steps in the present advisory proceedings. On 30 December 2022 by Resolution 77/247, the General Assembly of the United Nations decided to request an advisory opinion from the court. The text of this resolution was communicated to the court by a letter from the Secretary-General of the UN dated 17 January 2023 and received in the registry on 19 January 2023. I shall now ask the registrar to read from the operative paragraph of that resolution on the questions on which the court is asked to render an advisory opinion. Question A: What are the legal consequences arising from the ongoing violation by Israel of the right of the Palestinian people to self-determination from its prolonged occupation, settlement and annexation of the Palestinian territory occupied since 1967, including measures aimed at altering the demographic composition, the character and status of the holy city of Jerusalem, and from its adoption of related discriminatory legislation and measures? Question B: How do the policies and practices of Israel referred to in paragraph 18a above affect the legal status of the occupation and what are the legal consequences that arise for all states and the United Nations from this status? Thank you, says the President. By an order dated 3 February 2023, the court decided that the United Nations and its member states, as well as the observant state of Palestine, were considered likely to be able to furnish information on the questions submitted to the court for an advisory opinion and fixed 25 July 2023 as the time limit within which written statements on the questions could be presented to the court and 25 October 2023 as the time limit within which states and organizations having presented written statements could submit written comments on the other written statements. Ruling on requests submitted subsequently by the League of Arab States, the Organization of Islamic Cooperation and the African Union, the court decided that these three international organizations were likely to be able to furnish information on the questions submitted to the court and that consequently they could do so within the time limits fixed by the court. In June 2023, the Secretary-General of the United Nations communicated to the court a dossier of documents likely to throw light upon the questions formulated by the General Assembly. The dossier was placed on the court's website. In addition to the dossier, new documents and several translations were communicated to the court by the UN Secretariat in October 2023.
... in order of receipt by Turkey, Namibia, Luxembourg, Canada, Bangladesh, Jordan, Chile, Liechtenstein, Lebanon, Norway, Israel, Algeria, the League of Arab States, the Syrian Arab Republic, Palestine, the Organization of Islamic Cooperation, Egypt, Guyana, Japan, Saudi Arabia, Qatar, Switzerland, Spain, the Russian Federation, Italy, Yemen, the Maldives, the United Arab Emirates, Oman, the African Union, Pakistan, South Africa, the United Kingdom, Hungary, Brazil, France, Kuwait, the United States of America, China, the Gambia, Ireland, Belize, Bolivia, Cuba, Mauritius, Morocco, Czechia, Malaysia, Colombia, Indonesia, Guatemala, Nauru, Djibouti, Togo, Fiji, Senegal and Zambia. Then written comments were filed in the registry in order of receipt by Jordan, the Organization of Islamic Cooperation, Qatar, Belize, Bangladesh, Palestine, the United States of America, Indonesia, Chile, the League of Arab States, Egypt, Algeria, Guatemala, Namibia and Pakistan. By letters dated October 18, 2023, the registrar informed the United Nations, its member states and the observant state of Palestine, as well as the League of Arab States, the Organization of Islamic Cooperation and the African Union, that hearings on the request for an advisory opinion would open on 19 February 2024. For purposes of the current order proceedings, the following participants set out in speaking order will take the floor. Palestine, South Africa, Algeria, Saudi Arabia, the Kingdom of the Netherlands, Bangladesh, Belgium, Belize, Bolivia, Brazil, Chile, Colombia, Cuba, Egypt, the United Arab Emirates, the United States of America, the Russian Federation, France, the Gambia, Guyana, Hungary, China, the Islamic Republic of Iran, Iraq, Ireland, Japan, Jordan, Kuwait, Lebanon, Libya, Luxembourg, Malaysia, Mauritius, Namibia, Norway, Oman, Pakistan, Indonesia, Qatar, the United Kingdom, Slovenia, Sudan, Switzerland, the Syrian Arab Republic, Tunisia, Turkey, Zambia, the League of Arab States, the Organization of Islamic Cooperation, the African Union, Spain, Fiji, the Maldives and the Comoros. This morning, the court will hear the state of Palestine, which has been allocated a maximum speaking time of three hours. All the other participants in the order proceedings over the next days will speak for a maximum of 30 minutes each. Before inviting Palestine to address the court, I would add that in accordance with Article 106 of its rules, the court has decided that the written statements and written comments submitted in the current advisory proceedings are to be made accessible to the public after the opening of the present hearings. These written submissions will be posted on the court's website at the end of each day for those participating to the hearings on that day. The text of the oral statements will also be placed on the court's website. I now give the floor to His Excellency Mr. Riyad Maliki, Minister of Foreign Affairs and expatriates of the State of Palestine. Your Excellency, you have the floor.
Mr. President, members of the court, it is an honour and a great responsibility to appear before you on behalf of the people and state of Palestine in these historic proceedings. I stand before you as 2.3 million Palestinians in Gaza, half of them children, are besieged and bombed, killed and maimed, starved and displaced, as more than 3.5 million Palestinians in the West Bank, including East Jerusalem, are subjected to colonization of their territory and the racist violence that enables it, as 1.7 million Palestinians in Israel are treated as second-class citizens, as unwelcome intruders in their ancestral land, as 7 million Palestinian refugees continue to be denied their right to return to their land and homes. I stand before you as the entire Palestinian people continue to be denied their fundamental rights, their very existence negated. For over a century, the inalienable right of the Palestinian people to self-determination has been denied and violated. Palestine was not a land without a people, it was not, as Israeli leaders have described it, a wasteland. There was life on this land, there was a political life, a cultural life, a social life, a religious life. It had schools and universities, cinemas and cultural halls, it had villages and villagers, families and communities, whose life was disrupted by the impact of a promise made thousands of miles away over 100 years ago. A breach of sacred trust that relegated the indigenous people of the land to the status of non-Jewish communities, accordinging them only civil and religious rights, denying their existence as a people and their rights as a nation, and paving the way for their dehumanization and mass expulsion from their homeland decades later. The United Nations enshrined in its charter the right of all peoples to self-determination and pledged to rid the world of the gravest breaches of this right, namely colonialism and apartheid. Yet, for decades, the Palestinian people have been denied this right and have endured both colonialism and apartheid. There are those who are outraged by the use of these words, they should instead be outraged by the reality we are living. This reality is known by every Palestinian, suffered by millions, generation after generation. It is the reality of the expulsion of the Palestinian people from their own land, not just during the 1948 Nakba, which led to the expulsion of up to 900,000 Palestinians, not just the expulsion of more than 400,000 Palestinians in 1967, but continually, including now, as I address you at this very moment, it is the indiscriminate maiming and killing of Palestinians. It means you can spend the entirety of your life as a refugee, denied your dignity and your right to return home. It means your life and family, your community and home are under constant threat. Your loved ones can be taken away and thrown in an Israeli jail, held there indefinitely. Your land can be stolen, colonized and annexed without hesitation. Freedom is nowhere to be found, there is no safe haven. It means discrimination everywhere and no justice anywhere. It is a reality where Israel can destroy Gaza, killing tens of thousands of Palestinians, almost half of them children, leaving 1 million children starved, terrorized and traumatized for life, orphaned of a mother, a father or both, amputated and disabled, leaving nearly 2 million people displaced and desperate with nowhere to shelter from the onslaught. The genocide underway in Gaza is a result of decades of impunity and inaction. Ending Israel's impunity is a moral, political and legal imperative. Successive Israeli governments have given the Palestinian people only three options: displacement, subjugation or death. These are the choices: ethnic cleansing, apartheid or genocide. But our people are here to stay, they have a right to live in freedom and dignity in their ancestral land, they will not forsake their rights. I thus implore you, as you hear the legal arguments, not to forget the Palestinian people, not to forget that our people are struggling every day for their survival as individuals, families, communities as a nation. That less than a month ago, this court ordered provisional measures in a landmark case brought by the Republic of South Africa against Israel under the Genocide Convention, an order that Israel continues to defy with impunity. For decades, Israel has occupied the Palestinian territory, committing violations that are inherent to its presence in our land and colonial objective. This occupation is annexationist and supremacist in nature, it is a deliberate cynical perversion of international law, it is thus illegal. The only solution consistent with international law is for this illegal occupation to come to an immediate, unconditional and total end. As you affirmed 20 years ago, the Palestinian people have the right to self-determination, it is an erga omnis right, it is non-negotiable, non-derogable, no occupying power, including Israel, can be granted a perpetual veto over the rights of the people it occupies. Allow me now to show you five maps. The first one is historic Palestine. This is the territory over which the Palestinian people should have been able to exercise their right to self-determination. Instead, the General Assembly recommended the partition of Palestine, ignoring the will of our people as shown in the second map. With the Nakba that ensued, over two-thirds of our people were systematically and forcibly expelled by Israel. And three-fourth of Palestine became Israel, as shown in the third map. This was the start of the Nakba, the disposition, the displacement and replacement of our people, the denial of rights and discrimination that continues to this very day. In 1967, Israel then occupied the remainder of Palestine and from the first day of its occupation started colonizing and annexing the land with the aim of making its occupation irreversible. It left us with a collection of disconnected pantostats, preventing the independence of our state, as shown in map four. Israel wanted the geography of Palestine but not its demography, so it kept pushing our people out, out of their homes, out of their land. Here is the fifth map, it was displayed by Israel's Prime Minister to the General Assembly last September, he called this the New Middle East. There is no Palestine at all on this map, only Israel, comprised of all the land from the Jordan River to the Mediterranean Sea. This shows you what the prolonged, continuous Israeli occupation of Palestine is intended to accomplish: the complete disappearance of Palestine and the destruction of the Palestinian people. There can be no justification for these injustices and indignities, allowing them to continue is unacceptable and inexusable. Acquisition of territory by force, persecution, racial discrimination and apartheid against the people, denial of self-determination are all grave violations of the most fundamental norms of international law. There is illegal and moral obligation to bring them to a prompt end. Mr. President, members of the court, the state of Palestine reaffirms its unwavering commitment to the rule of international law, which must finally prevail. The force of the law must prevail over the unlawful use of force. We said years ago that we made the choice, justice not vengeance, but justice delayed is justice denied, and the Palestinian people have been denied justice for far too long. We believe in the universal principles crafted over decades to save successive generations from the scourge of war and oppression. It is time to put an end to the double standards that have kept our people captive for far too long. International law must be applied to all states without exception. No state can be absolved of its obligations under the law and no people can be deprived of its protection. Palestine legitimately seeks the fulfillment of the rights of our people, including the independence of the state of Palestine on the pre-1967 borders with East Jerusalem as its capital, in accordance with international law and the United Nations resolutions. This is the historical compromise we agreed to, a just and lasting solution with two democratic states, Palestine and Israel, living side by side in peace and security. We seek peace which can only be rooted in justice. When we committed to the peace process three decades ago, we did it in the belief and expectation that international law would finally be upheld, not that this process would witness its continued breach, we did so expecting that the rights of our people would finally be fulfilled, not further denied. By determining the law and the obligations of all states and organizations, this court can help chart a path for peace anchored in justice and respecting international law. It has taken the Palestinian people decades of painful struggle to stand before you today. We appeal to the court to uphold our rights to self-determination, return and all other human rights, including by declaring that the Israeli occupation is illegal and must end immediately, totally and unconditionally. Mr. President, members of the court, I will be followed today by six speakers on behalf of the state of Palestine. First will be Professor Andreas Zimmermann, who will address the court's jurisdiction to answer the General Assembly's questions and the absence of compelling reasons that might lead the court to decline to do so. Next will be Mr. Paul Reichler, who will demonstrate the illegality of Israel's prolonged occupation, because its annexation of Palestinian territory, including through widespread colonization, is intended to be permanent in violation of the prohibition of the acquisition of territory by force. The next speaker will be Ambassador Namira Nigma, who will address the system of persecution, racial discrimination and apartheid that Israel is imposing over the Palestinian people as a means of maintaining its control over the land by the subjugation of the indigenous Palestinian people. She will be followed by Professor Philip Sands, who will demonstrate how Israel's disposition, displacement and replacement of the Palestinian people and discrimination against them has led to the wholesale denial of their inalienable right to self-determination. The court will then be addressed by Professor Alain Pellet, who will identify the legal consequences that follow from Israel's grave and ongoing violations of preemptory norms. These legal consequences necessarily include the obligation to bring this unlawful occupation to an end and to dismantle the colonial and supremacist architecture, legal and physical, that Israel has consolidated over decades. The final speaker of the state of Palestine will be Minister Riyad Mansour, our permanent representative to the United Nations. Minister Mansour will focus on the permanent responsibility of the United Nations and the obligations of all states to bring this injustice to a swift end, so as to uphold the laws, fulfill the Palestinian rights and achieve a just peace for all. Many states will also stand before this court, informed by their own history of occupation, colonialism and apartheid. They will stand here on principle to defend the international law-based order and millions around the world will be watching, hoping that their faith in the international system can be restored and that the Palestinian people will not be abandoned or discarded as expendable. Palestine remains the greatest test of the credibility of this international law-based order, a test humanity cannot afford to fail. Mr. President, members of the court, the state of Palestine expresses its fullest confidence that you will discharge sacred duties entrusted to you with the wisdom, fairness and justice that the world expects and needs of you. I thank you for the honour of addressing you and I now request, Mr. President, the court to call on Professor Zimmermann. Thank you.
I thank His Excellency Mr. Maliki for his opening statement. I now give the floor to Professor Andreas Zimmermann, you have the floor, Professor.
Merci, Monsieur le Président. Mr. President, members of the court, let me start by expressing my honour to appear once again before the court. This is even more true this time since the current proceedings address issues that have been of utmost relevance for the international community for decades and indeed for the United Nations since its very inception. These issues lie at the very heart of the organization's ability to achieve international peace and security, now more than ever. I will present Palestine's arguments on jurisdiction and admissibility. I can and will be succinct, as there is no doubt that the court has jurisdiction to give the requested opinion and that there are no compelling reasons for the court to decline to issue the requested opinion. Rather, to the contrary, compelling positive reasons exist for the court to address the legal questions referred to it, as the court's legal determinations will assist all parties as to the legal parameters that must be adhered to. The court's determinations are both urgent and relevant, given Israel's manifold violations of preemptory norms of international law, which continue and intensify on a daily basis. Mr. President, the court clearly has jurisdiction to provide the requested opinion. The General Assembly is obviously competent to request the opinion in line with Article 96.1 of the Charter. Moreover, Resolution 77/247 was adopted by a clear majority and in full compliance with both the requirements of the Charter and the Assembly's Rules of Procedure. The questions posed by the General Assembly are also plainly legal in character and as the court has repeatedly and consistently confirmed in its jurisprudence, the fact that the questions may have political implications is irrelevant and does not bar the court from fulfilling its essential judicial function. Further, there is no reason, let alone a compelling one, for the court to decline to issue the requested opinion. On the contrary, manifold reasons exist which confirm that an answer by the court to these questions is of utmost importance for the General Assembly, the United Nations at large and the international community as a whole. First, the questions concern serious breaches of Uskogans and erga omnis norms. As my colleagues will show, those breaches by Israel include violations of the prohibition of acquisition of territory by force, the prohibition of racial discrimination and apartheid, the denial... the denial of the right of self-determination, as well as other egregious violations of international human rights and humanitarian law of the same character. Accordingly, all states, as well as the United Nations in total, have a legally protected interest in having those violations in both their individual and cumulative manifestations as well as their legal consequences laid out and clarified by the court, so as to guide them in their future actions. Second, the questions concern the United Nations' continuous responsibility for resolving the question of Palestine. This responsibility stems from its duties relating to matters of international peace and security arising under the Charter, and as the court put it, "has its origin in the mandate and the partition resolution concerning Palestine." This responsibility continues, as confirmed by the unequivocal and contemporary practice of the General Assembly, the Security Council, as well as other United Nations organs and bodies. And as the court had previously reiterated in its oral advisory opinion, there exists, and I quote, "a permanent responsibility of the United Nations towards the question of Palestine until the question is resolved in all its aspects in a satisfactory manner in accordance with international legitimacy." The questions put before the court by the Assembly thus seek the court's legal guidance on matters of fundamental and longstanding importance and concern to the United Nations. Third, all of the grounds for declining to issue an opinion suggested in the submissions of a few states fall far short of constituting compelling reasons that must exist for the court to refrain from answering the General Assembly's questions. Some of these submissions oppose the advisory opinion because of the purported existence of a negotiation framework or of bilateral negotiations. However, none of these considerations constitutes a reasonable basis for the court to refuse the General Assembly's request. To the contrary, an opinion from the court will assist in these negotiations by confirming the applicable international legal framework, as affirmed in United Nations resolutions, in order to reach a just and peaceful solution. As a matter of fact, there exist at least three reasons why the court should not be deterred from answering the G A's questions on that basis. First, Israel has repeatedly refused, and to this very day, to engage in meaningful negotiations with Palestine on the basis of international law and United Nations resolutions. This is reflected in repeated statements, including most recently by the Israeli Prime Minister and other high-ranking Israeli officials. The mere hypothetical possibility of future negotiations cannot thus be used as a mere pretext for avoiding the application of international law to this crucial matter or for avoiding responsibility for ongoing breaches of preemptory norms of international law. Israel has made it clear that it wants and will tolerate only one state, Israel, between the Mediterranean Sea and the Jordan River. This is confirmed inter alia by the map displayed by the Israeli Prime Minister in his speech before the General Assembly of 22nd September 2023, that you have already seen, as well as by his November 2023 statement, where the Israeli Prime Minister said that he was proud to have prevented the establishment of a Palestinian state. But these statements of Israel's head of government have not been empty words. Rather, they are reflected in concrete policy decisions and measures on the ground undertaken by Israel for decades. Inter alia, when faced with the attempt by Palestine to initiate the conciliation procedure under Articles 11 and 12/3, it was Israel that consistently and continuously rejected any meaningful attempt to bring to an end by way of negotiations under the auspices of the ad hoc commission set up under Article 12/3, its entrenched system of racial discrimination inherent in its occupation regime. Second, and significantly, the Security Council has repeatedly called for a peaceful settlement of the question of Palestine based on international law. It renewed this call only two months ago, in December 2023, in its Resolution 27/20, when reiterating that the solution to the conflict must be, and I quote the Council, "consistent with international law and relevant U N resolutions." The court's opinion can thus only contribute to achieving the peaceful settlement of the question of Palestine called for by the Security Council. It, your opinion, will clarify the legal rights and obligations of Israel, of Palestine, of third states, and of the United Nations to be reflected in a settlement that is truly consistent with international law. Thus, the court's opinion will also contribute to upholding the international rule of law at large. In that regard, let me remind you, members of the court, that this is precisely what the court's advisory opinion in the Chagos proceedings achieved. By clarifying the relevant legal rules, it, your opinion, broke the deadlock that had precluded negotiations. The advisory opinion, your opinion, led the United Kingdom to agree to negotiate with Mauritius for the first time on the basis of Mauritius sovereignty over the disputed territory. Third, the General Assembly, when deciding upon the request for the current advisory opinion, was acutely aware of the claim that such request would somehow purportedly undermine the chances of future negotiations. Nevertheless, the General Assembly decided to ask for the court's legal determination. Anyway, the General Assembly thus found that this argument had no merit. To the contrary, it considered, the G A considered, that the court's opinion would be helpful as to future steps to be taken by the political organs of the United Nations as well as by all states. In line with your role as one of the principal organs of the organization, as envisaged in Article 7 of the Charter, the court ought not now set aside this considered decision of the General Assembly. Members of the court, the mere hypothetical chance of possible future negotiations cannot and ought not prevent the court from rendering its opinion. If this were the case, Court Non, a reluctant state wishing to bar the court from exercising its judicial function could unilaterally prevent the matter from reaching the court by simply insisting on the mere possibility of negotiations. This would curtail the General Assembly's right to receive legal assistance from the court and to do so even in a situation where the General Assembly, making the request, determined that such opinion by the court would be needed for the exercise of its own function. Such approach finds no basis in the wording of the Charter or the Court statute either. It would unduly limit the right of the political organs of the United Nations to request an opinion from the court on any, as the wording has it, "on any legal question," as both 96.1 Charter and 65 of the Court statute provide unequivocally. Mr. President, members of the court, let me conclude. The catastrophic developments of recent months in the Gaza Strip confirm that the matters put to the court by the General Assembly are, if ever there was need, not mere bilateral issues. Rather, they are issues of grave consequence for the maintenance of international peace and security. They are thus of immense concern for the international community at large, where the court's legal guidance is desperately needed. All of these aforementioned considerations corroborate that in the present proceedings, as indeed in each and every previous advisory proceedings that had come before this court, there are no reasons, no compelling reasons, to prevent the court from rendering its opinion. Rather, Palestine invites the court to fulfill its duty of providing its legal determination to the General Assembly by answering the legal questions put to it. In so doing, you will assist all states as well as the United Nations in furthering respect for the international rule of law, the fulfillment of the inalienable rights of the Palestinian people, and a just and peaceful solution in accordance with international law. Members of the court, I thank you for your kind attention and would now kindly ask you, Mr. President, to call upon Mr. Reichler to take the floor. Thank you.
I thank Professor Zimmermann. I now give the floor to Mr. Paul Reichler. You have the floor, Mr. Reichler.
Mr. President, members of the court, it is an honor for me to appear before you and a privilege to speak on behalf of the State of Palestine. I will address the legality of Israel's prolonged occupation, annexation, and settlement of the occupied Palestinian territory. In so doing, I will identify the elements that determine whether and in what circumstances a belligerent occupation is or becomes unlawful under international law. I will then review the evidence to assess whether those elements are present here, and I will show that based on the applicable law and the well-established and undisputed facts, Israel's 56-year occupation of Palestinian territory is manifestly and gravely unlawful and that international law requires that it be brought to an end completely and unconditionally. The applicable rule of law is straightforward. As Piketty wrote in 1958, occupation is essentially a temporary situation. This remains the law. In December 2022, the General Assembly, in Resolution 77/126, recognized that the occupation of a territory is to be a temporary de facto situation whereby the occupying power can neither claim possession nor exert its sovereignty over the territory it occupies. This rule is neatly explained in the written statement of Switzerland. The laws of occupation are built on the idea that occupation is only a temporary situation. They are based on four fundamental principles. One, the occupying power does not acquire sovereignty over the territory it occupies. Two, the occupying power must maintain the status quo ante and must not take any measures which might bring about permanent changes. The law is thus crystal clear. Occupation can only be a temporary state of affairs. A permanent occupation is a legal oxymoron. Mr. President, what makes Israel's ongoing occupation of the Palestinian territory unlawful is precisely its permanent character. And what demonstrates its permanence are, one, Israel's de jure and de facto annexation of Jerusalem and the West Bank; two, its claims of sovereignty over these areas, which it refers to by their biblical names, Judea and Samaria, and considers integral parts of the State of Israel; three, its establishment of hundreds of permanent Israeli settlements, with over 700,000 Israeli settlers who have been promised by successive Israeli governments that they will never be removed; and four, the multitude of official statements and documents that openly declare Israel's intention to incorporate all of the occupied territory east of the Green Line into the State of Israel as a permanent part of a single Jewish state extending from the Jordan River to the Mediterranean Sea. As I will show you, the evidence is overwhelming and leaves no room for serious dispute about Israel's actions or its intentions. As Israel's Cabinet Secretary wrote in June of last year, "Judea and Samaria were not seized from a sovereign state recognized by international law, and the State of Israel has a right to impose its sovereignty over these areas, as they comprise the cradle of history of the Jewish people and are an inseparable part of the land of Israel." As purported legal authority, the Cabinet Secretary invoked the first Book of Maccabees, written in the year 100 B.C., Chapter 15, Verse 33. "It is not a foreign land we have taken, nor have we seized the property of foreigners, but only our ancestral heritage, which for a time had been unjustly occupied by our enemies." This was followed in August of last year by a message broadcast on Israel Army radio by Israel's Heritage Minister. Sovereignty must be extended within the borders of the West Bank and the most prudent way to create international recognition that this place is ours. There is no Green Line. It is a fictitious line that creates a distorted reality and must be erased. In September 2023, Israel's Prime Minister literally erased the Green Line in his presentation to the United Nations General Assembly. As you saw earlier, he depicted the State of Israel as extending from the Jordan River to the Mediterranean Sea, eliminating not only the Green Line but all traces of Palestine. This was no oversight. It was an act of the head of government with all the attribution that it implies. The same message was delivered by Israel's Finance Minister in Paris six months earlier, when he denied the existence of Palestine and declared that Palestinians do not constitute a people. Previously, he said, "We are here to stay. We will make it clear that our national ambition for a Jewish state from the river to the sea is an accomplished fact, a fact not open to discussion or negotiation." This has been Israel's consistent position. Here is the map of Israel produced by its armed forces and published by the government in 2021. One state, Israel, from the river to the sea. There is no Green Line. There is no Palestine. Instead, Palestine has been replaced by Judea and Samaria, which according to Israel's highest officials are now integral parts of the State of Israel. As these official statements and maps demonstrate, Israel makes no secret of its intention to retain permanently the entire area east of the Green Line. Its annexation of occupied Palestinian territory began in 1967 with legislation annexing East Jerusalem, which Israel increased elevenfold in size to incorporate not only the Holy City but also vast areas of the West Bank surrounding the city. Its Defense Minister, Moshe Dayan, declared at the time, "The Israel Defense Forces have liberated Jerusalem. We have returned to this most sacred shrine, never to part from it again." In 1990, the Israeli Cabinet instructed the Foreign Minister to notify the Secretary-General of the United Nations that Jerusalem is not in any part occupied territory. It is the sovereign capital of Israel. In June 1996, the guidelines of the incoming Israeli government stated, "Jerusalem, the capital of Israel, is one city, whole and undivided, and will remain forever under Israel's sovereignty." More recently, in assuming office in December 2022, the current Prime Minister declared that the Jewish people are not occupiers in their own land, nor occupiers in our eternal capital, Jerusalem. capital, Jerusalem. As these official statements make clear, Israel’s dominion over Jerusalem and the incorporated area of the West Bank is not intended to be temporary. It has been repeatedly proclaimed by Israel’s highest authorities to be eternal. In furtherance of this end, more than 230,000 Israeli Jewish settlers, encouraged, subsidized and protected by the Israeli government and occupation forces, have been installed in East Jerusalem, dramatically altering the demographic composition of the Holy City by creating an Israeli Jewish majority. Israel has been equally clear in declaring its permanence in the West Bank, where more than 465,000 Israeli Jewish settlers have been implanted, with the support of every Israeli government since 1967, in over 270 ever-expanding settlements spread throughout this territory in what can only be described as a vast colonial enterprise. These settlements, whose accelerated growth and distribution over the years are illustrated on your screens now, are a key instrument of Israel’s annexation of the West Bank. This is both their purpose and their effect. As the Secretary-General reported to the General Assembly in 2015, “Occupation is supposed to be temporary because the annexation or acquisition of territory by force is strictly prohibited under international law. In the West Bank, including East Jerusalem, the establishment and maintenance of the settlements amount to a slow but steady annexation of the occupied Palestinian territory.” Israel has made no secret of the intended permanence of these settlements. In 2010, Prime Minister Netanyahu told Israeli settlers in the West Bank, “Our message is clear: we are planting here, we will stay here, we will build here. This place will be an inseparable part of the State of Israel for eternity.” In August 2019, the Prime Minister announced, “The time has come to apply Israeli sovereignty over the Jordan Valley and to also arrange the status of all Jewish communities in Judea and Samaria. They will be part of the State of Israel.” In January 2020, Israel’s Defence Minister, Naftali Bennett, declared, “Our objective is that within a short amount of time, we will apply sovereignty to all of Arius Sea, not just the settlements, not just this block or another. This area, which is depicted in red on your screens now, comprises over 61% of the West Bank.” The Defence Minister proclaimed, “I solemnly declare that Arius Sea belongs to Israel. This area includes the Jordan Valley, which is the water reservoir, the breadbasket and the source of life for the entire West Bank.” In December 2022, the guiding principles of the incoming Israeli government declared, “The Jewish people have an exclusive and indisputable right to all parts of the land of Israel. The government will promote and develop the settlement of all parts of the land of Israel: the Galilee, the Negev, the Golan, and Judea and Samaria.” The coalition agreement between the political parties that formed the government included this pledge: “The Prime Minister will lead the formulation and promotion of policy in which sovereignty will be applied in Judea and Samaria, while choosing the timing and weighing all the national, international interests of the State of Israel.” General Assembly Resolution 77/126 was adopted on 12 December 2022, just as the current Israeli government was assuming office. The resolution pointedly recalled, “The principle of the inadmissibility of the acquisition of land by force and therefore the illegality of the annexation of any part of the occupied Palestinian territory, including East Jerusalem, which constitutes a breach of international law.” And the resolution condemned, “The Israel’s annexation of land, whether de facto or through national legislation.” Israel has thoroughly disregarded Resolution 77/126, just as it disregarded all prior General Assembly and Security Council resolutions declaring illegal the annexation of any part of the occupied Palestinian territory and the establishment of Israeli settlements there. These include, but are by no means limited to, Security Council Resolution 252 of 1968, declaring Israel’s acquisition of territory by military conquest inadmissible; Resolution 476 of 1980, which reaffirmed the overriding necessity for ending the prolonged occupation of Arab territories in 1980, and strongly deplored the refusal of Israel to comply with the relevant resolutions of the Security Council and the General Assembly; Resolution 478 of 1980, which determined that all legislative and administrative measures and actions taken by Israel to alter the character and status of the Holy City of Jerusalem and particularly the basic law in Jerusalem are null and void and must be rescinded forthwith; Resolution 2334 of 2016, which reaffirmed the inadmissibility of the acquisition of territory by force and condemned all measures aimed at altering the demographic composition, character and status of the Palestinian territory occupied since 1967, including interalia, the construction and expansion of settlements, transfer of Israeli settlers, confiscation of land, demolition of homes and displacement of Palestinian submissions; and at least 28 General Assembly resolutions which expressly condemned Israel’s annexation of Jerusalem and the West Bank. Israel has also blatantly disregarded the obligations reflected in the court’s 2004 advisory opinion on the wall case. Since then, instead of dismantling the wall, Israel has extended it from a length of 190 kilometers to more than 460 kilometers, encompassing hundreds of additional square kilometers of Palestinian land and incorporating it into the State of Israel. In its advisory opinion, the court expressed concern lest, “The construction of the wall and its associated regime create a fait accompli on the ground that could well become permanent, in which case, and notwithstanding the formal characterization of the wall by Israel, it would be tantamount to de facto annexation.” And that is precisely what has happened over the past 20 years, not only within the expanded confines of the wall but all across the West Bank, most of which has now been annexed de facto by Israel. In 2022, the report of the United Nations International Commission of Inquiry concluded, “Israel treats the occupation as a permanent fixture and has for all intents and purposes annexed parts of the West Bank.” The International Court of Justice anticipated such a scenario in its 2004 advisory opinion. This has now become the reality. The Special Rapporteur on Human Rights in the Occupied Palestinian Territory reached the same conclusion: “The occupation by Israel has been conducted in profound defiance of international law. Its 55-year-old occupation burst through the restraints of temporariness long ago. Israel has progressively engaged in the de jure and de facto annexation of occupied Mr. President, Israel’s ongoing annexation of the West Bank accelerated in 2023 with the largest ever expansion of settlements in the territory. Twenty-two new settlements were authorized and more than 16,000 new housing units were built, funded or planned by Israeli authorities, as explained by Israel’s Finance Minister, “The construction boom in Judea and Samaria and all over our country continues. We will continue to develop the settlements and strengthen the Israeli hold on the territory.” In developing its settlements, Israel has invested heavily in the infrastructure needed to supply them with water and electric power, as well as a network of roads and highways to connect them to one another and to Israel itself. These investments, in the hundreds of millions of dollars, attest to the intended permanent character of the settlements. The roads, which Palestinians are forbidden to use, and a pervasive system of roadblocks and checkpoints prevent Palestinians, but not Israeli settlers, from moving from place to place in the West Bank, and they isolate Palestinian communities by cutting them off from one another. Israel’s settlement expansion has thus both uprooted Palestinians from their homes to make room for new settlements and forced them to live in disconnected and non-contiguous enclaves, which the Special Rapporteur has called “a fragmented archipelago of 165 disparate patches of land.” This achieves the fundamental objective of the occupation: permanent acquisition of the maximum amount of Palestinian territory with the minimum number of Palestinians in it. In furtherance of this objective, and with increasing frequency, armed groups of settlers, supported by Israel’s occupation forces and encouraged by government ministers, have violently expelled thousands of peaceful Palestinian civilians from their ancestral villages and lands. A U.N. fact-finding mission confirmed, “The motivation behind this violence and the intimidation against the Palestinians and their properties is to drive the local populations away from their lands and allow the settlements to expand.” The U.N. High Commissioner for Human Rights reported in March 2023, “Settler violence further intensified, reaching the highest levels ever recorded by the United Nations.” In November 2023, the High Commissioner warned that the situation had further deteriorated with “a sharp increase in settler violence and takeover of land across the West Bank.” Since 7 October, he continued, “Nearly 1,000 Palestinians from at least 15 hurting communities have been forced from their homes.” The Secretary-General, in his most recent report issued on 25 October 2023, expressly linked the expansion of Israeli settlements to the permanent acquisition of Palestinian territory. Successive Israeli governments have consistently advanced and implemented policies of settlement expansion and takeover of Palestinian land. The policies of the current government in this regard are aligned to an unprecedented extent with the goals of the Israeli settler movement: to expand long-term control over the occupied West Bank, including East Jerusalem, and in practice, to further integrate those areas within the territory of the State of Israel. Mr. President, Members of the Court, taking account of this evidence as well as that described in the State of Palestine’s two written submissions, I turn to the law and how it applies to this occupation. The written statement of Switzerland is once again directly on point. It highlights the distinction between the law of occupation and the legality of a particular occupation. The law of occupation and the legality of occupation are two different questions. The law of occupation applies independently of the question of the legality of the occupation. Occupation is a situation subject to international humanitarian law, whereas its legality is covered by the United Nations Charter. In relation to the legality of the occupation under the Charter, Switzerland observes, “The United Nations has consistently reaffirmed the principle of the inadmissibility of the acquisition of territory by force and condemned Israeli measures aimed at modifying the demographic composition, the character and the status of Jerusalem and the occupied Palestinian territory as a whole, notably the construction and extension of settlements, the transfer of Israeli settlements, the confiscation of land, the demolition of homes and the displacement of Palestinian civilians.” In Switzerland’s view, “The measures taken by Israel in the occupied Palestinian territory lead to fundamental changes, particularly demographic changes, that can have a permanent character.” In such circumstances, Switzerland expressly invites the court, “to rule on the consequences of the permanent character of the measures taken by Israel in the occupied Palestinian territory as to the status of the occupation under general international law, in particular the Charter of the United Nations.” Many states agree with this approach. France, too, underscores the temporary character of lawful occupation. This is a requirement that Israel’s occupation of Palestinian territory plainly fails to meet. As France states, “If the restrictions authorized by a regime of occupation were justifiable in the period following the military operations, they are not anymore today.” These points have been reiterated by the Security Council and the General Assembly on numerous occasions concerning Israel’s obligation to withdraw from the occupied territories. France calls out in particular Israel’s annexation of occupied territory. “The status of occupying power does not confer any legal title justifying annexation. The passage of time is not sufficient as regards the acquisition of territory by force to render lawful a situation that is gravely unlawful.” On Israel’s vast network of settlements and hundreds of thousands of settlers in the occupied territory, France states, “These permanent establishments are obviously incompatible with the necessarily temporary character of the occupation.” Thirty-five of the states and international organizations that submitted written statements addressed to the legality of Israel’s occupation, thirty-five of the states and international organizations, have addressed the legality of Israel’s occupation of Palestinian territory. Only two of these 35, to which I will come, argued that the occupation is not unlawful. Key excerpts reflecting the views expressed by the overwhelming majority, that the occupation is unlawful as a whole and must be brought to an end, are collected in Chapter 2 of the State of Palestine’s written comments. Here are three brief but emblematic examples. The African Union invites the court to conclude that the prolonged Israeli occupation of the Palestinian territories is in itself unlawful. The policies and practices associated with it amount to de facto and de jure annexation of the Palestinian territories, which violates the prohibition on the acquisition of territory by force. Brazil observes that “occupation is inherently temporary. This is the basic distinction between occupation and annexation.” Brazil here hits the nail right on the head. Unlike occupation, annexation is intended to be permanent, and it makes the occupation its itself unlawful. In Brazil’s words, “Israel’s policies and practices render the occupation unlawful as a whole inasmuch as it would be tantamount to the acquisition of territory by force.” Japan, too, emphasizes that the annexation of occupied territory is unlawful, referring to Article 2.4 of the UN Charter. Quote, “As the ICJ clarified in the Wall Advisory Opinion, the illegality of the acquisition of territory by force is a corollary of the prohibition of use of force incorporated in the UN Charter,” which Japan calls, quote, “the most fundamental rule of the post-war regime for peace based on the rule of law among nations.” The two outliers are Fiji and the United States. Of all the states that submitted written statements to the Court, only Fiji attempted to defend the occupation as lawful. But even Fiji conceded that Israel has annexed East Jerusalem de jure, and that the application of an occupying power’s laws to the occupied territory, which is the case in the West Bank, constitutes an annexation de facto. Nor did Israel itself deny its annexations of Jerusalem and the West Bank. Its abbreviated written statement is mainly an attack on the General Assembly for its alleged bias. It makes no attempt to defend the legality of its occupation under international law. The only state besides Fiji to defend Israel is the United States. This is not surprising. Whatever offenses against international law Israel commits, the United States comes forward to shield it from accountability. Here are the United States’ attempts to defend Israel, not by arguing that the occupation is lawful, but that it is neither lawful nor unlawful. To reach this conclusion, the United States argues that belligerent occupation is governed exclusively by international humanitarian law and not by the UN Charter or general international law. In its own words, quote, “Although international humanitarian law imposes obligations on belligerents in their conduct of an occupation, it does not provide for the legal status of an occupation to be lawful or unlawful.” Even assuming arguendo that this is a correct reading of international humanitarian law, which we dispute, it does not lead to the conclusion that an occupation cannot be unlawful under international law. What about Article 2.4 of the UN Charter and general international law, including the prohibition on acquisition of territory by force? For the United States, apparently, this peremptory norm does not exist when it comes to Israel’s annexation and settlement of the occupied Palestinian territory. Only in such a lawless and UN Charterless world could the Israeli occupation be described as not unlawful. Notably, the United States ignores the part of the General Assembly’s request that the Court determine the legal status of the occupation under the UN Charter, in addition to IHL and other sources of law. And the U.S. fails to mention, let alone respond, to Switzerland’s written statement asserting that belligerent occupation is covered both by IHL and by the UN Charter and general international law, and that the legality of the occupation itself is governed by the latter. The United States also ignores the written statements of the many other states, which conclude that the Israeli occupation is unlawful as a whole precisely because its annexation and settlement of the occupied territory constitutes a permanent acquisition of territory by force in violation of Article 2.4 and general international law. Instead, in a single footnote, the United States responds only to those states which submitted that the Israeli occupation is unlawful under Articles Forty and Forty-One of the Draft Articles on State Responsibility for Internationally Wrongful Conduct. Remarkably, the U.S. contends that neither of those two articles reflect general international law. This is truly stunning. A persistent failure of a state to fulfill an obligation arising under a peremptory norm is not unlawful under general international law, as provided in Article Forty? The injunction in Article Forty-One, that no state shall recognize as lawful a situation created by a serious breach of a peremptory norm, is not part of general international law? Just how far, in disregarding the international legal order, will the United States go to exempt Israel from the consequences of its ongoing violation of peremptory norms, including the prohibition on acquisition of territory by force? Apparently, very far indeed. According to former U.S. President Barack Obama, in the memoir he published in 2020, “Just about every country in the world considered Israel’s continued occupation of the Palestinian territories to be a violation of international law. As a result, our diplomats found themselves in the awkward position of having to defend Israel for actions that we ourselves opposed.” This is exactly what the United States is doing, again, in these proceedings. Mr. President, members of the Court, the evidence is before you. In the written submissions of the State of Palestine and dozens of other states and international organizations, and in the voluminous materials supplied to you by the Secretary-General, and it is indisputable. Under the umbrella of its prolonged military occupation, Israel has been steadily annexing the occupied Palestinian territory, and it continues to do so. Its undisguised objective is the permanent acquisition of this territory and the exercise of sovereignty over it in defiance of the prohibition on acquisition of territory by force. The evidence is not only indisputable, it is of the highest probative value. Investigative reports of authoritative United Nations agencies, reports of the Secretary-General, resolutions of the Security Council and the General Assembly, legislative and administrative acts by the Israeli government, and public statements against interest by the most senior government officials, admitting that Israel’s objective is sovereignty over all the territory east of the Green Line and its incorporation into a single Jewish state from the river to the sea. In this case, there is no reason not to take them at their word, because their deeds have been entirely consistent with it. For Israel, as its successive governments have made clear, there is no Palestine. It simply does not exist. In November 2023, Prime Minister Netanyahu declared that his government would never agree to a Palestinian state in the occupied territory. He later declared, “I will not compromise on full security control over all the territory west of Jordan, and this is contrary to a Palestinian state.” Israel’s intransigence was confirmed by its staunchest ally in December 2023, when U.S. President Joe Biden publicly lamented that Israel’s leaders, quote, “don’t want anything remotely approaching a two-state solution.” That is the very solution demanded by the Security Council, the General Assembly, the overwhelming majority of states, and the State of Palestine itself. It is, in fact, the only solution that can lead to lasting peace and security for the Israeli people as well as the Palestinian people. And it is this very solution that has been frustrated by Israel’s defiant insistence on maintaining its dominion over Palestinian territory in perpetuity. This is why the Court’s advisory opinion is so critical and so urgent. The best, and possibly the last, hope for the two-state solution that is so vital to the needs of both peoples is for the Court to declare illegal the main obstacle to that solution, the ongoing Israeli occupation of Palestine, and for it to pronounce, in the clearest possible terms, that international law requires that this entire illegal enterprise be terminated completely, unconditionally, and immediately. Mr. President, the law is clear, and it demands nothing less. A permanent occupation, one that is founded upon annexation and massive settlement of the occupied territory and which aims to exercise sovereignty over it, is manifestly and gravely unlawful. It is an ongoing international wrong that must be brought to an immediate end. As the Court ruled in 1971, quote, “The continued presence of South Africa in Namibia being illegal, South Africa is under obligation to withdraw its administration from Namibia immediately and thus put an end to its occupation of the territory.” The Secretary-General applied this principle directly to Palestine in his remarks to the Security Council one month ago. Quote, “Palestinians must see their legitimate aspirations for a fully independent, viable, and sovereign state realized in line with United Nations resolutions, international law, and previous agreements. Israel’s occupation must end.” End of quote. Mr. President, the proverbial ball is now in your court. The General Assembly has asked you the critical questions. It is now your responsibility to answer them. Silence is not an option. As the immortal Palestinian poet Mahmoud Darwish wrote, “In silence, we become accomplices.” But, he assured us, “When we speak, every word has the power to change the world.” Mr. President, members of the Court, your words have such power. In 2004, the Court affirmed the inalienable right of the Palestinian people to self-determination. In 2024, it is time for you to enable them finally to exercise that right by freeing them from the unlawful Israeli occupation of their territory, so that they may live in a sovereign and fully independent state of their own, in peaceful and secure coexistence with all their neighbors, including Israel. By upholding international law, which is all the State of Palestine asks you to do, your powerful words will change the world. I thank you, Mr. President, members of the Court, for your kind courtesy and patient attention. We’re in your hands, Mr. President. Would you would like to take the mid-morning break now or call our next speaker?
I thank Mr. Reitler. I invite the next speaker to take the floor. After a coffee break of ten minutes, the sitting is suspended. After a coffee break of ten minutes, the sitting is suspended. Please be seated. The sitting is resumed. I shall give the floor now to Ms. Namira Nagim. You have the floor, madam.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, distinguished members of the Court, it’s an honour to appear before you on behalf of the State of Palestine to address Israel’s racial discrimination, persecution, and apartheid against the Palestinian people. Starting from the Nakba of 1948 until now, Israel has adopted discriminatory legislation and measures by which it has established a deeply entrenched system of racial discrimination against Palestinians, subjugating them to Israeli domination and denying their fundamental rights. Discrimination against the Palestinian people is as integral to Israel’s prolonged occupation as is the annexation and colonization of the Palestinian territory. They are inextricable parts of the same whole and feet of each other. The UN Special Rapporteur has explained, and I quote, “At the heart of the settler-colonial project of Israel is a comprehensive dual-legal and political system that provides comprehensive rights and living conditions for the Jewish-Israeli settlers in the West Bank, including East Jerusalem, while imposing upon the Palestinians military rule and control without any of the basic protections of international humanitarian and human rights law,” end of quote. In the OPT, Israeli civilian laws apply extrateritorially to illegal settlers, while draconian Israeli military laws apply to the Palestinian population on the sole basis of national or ethnic origin. Using a toolbox of population control and inhumane acts amounting to aggravated forms of racial discrimination, Israel restricts every aspect of Palestinians’ life, from birth to death, resulting in manifest human rights violations and an overt system of repression and persecution. Treated as a burden and a demographic threat, Palestinians’ rights to life, liberty, and their fundamental freedoms are systematically denied. In East Jerusalem, by revoking thousands of residential permits, Israel has transformed the Palestinians with deep ancestral roots into temporary residents, who can lose that residency and the right to live in their city at any moment. Through indiscriminate killing, summary execution, mass arbitrary arrest, torture, forced displacement, settler violence, movement restrictions and blockades, Israel subjects Palestinians to inhumane life conditions and untold human indignities, affecting the fate of every man, woman, and child under its control. For Israel, Palestinians are by definition guilty. Hence, it comes as no surprise that the conviction rate for Palestinians who hold before Israeli military courts stands at 99%. In the words of the Special Rapporteur, and I quote, “Israel’s all-encompassing criminalization shows that the military legislation rather than safeguarding security renders every single Palestinian potentially subject to imprisonment for ordinary acts of life,” end of quote. By contrast, despite the call by the Security Council for Israel to disarm the settlers, their violence continues, aided and abetted by the Israeli government and military. This is part and parcel of this Israeli domination and discrimination enterprise. Settlers are rarely, if ever, prosecuted for crimes against Palestinians, ravaging them with absolute impunity. Even some states friendly to Israel have now decided to sanction some of the violent settlers themselves, as Israel fails to do so. Palestinians, and Palestinians only, endure horrific levels of extensive human and material losses, including home demolitions enforced as collective punishment. All of this has created a coercive environment that facilitates Israel’s forceful displacement of Palestinians. As described by this Special Rapporteur, and I quote, “Collective punishment is an inflamed scar that runs across the entire Israeli occupation of Palestine. Notwithstanding numerous resolutions, reports, and reminders critical of its use, Israel continues to rely upon collective punishment as a prominent instrument in its coercive toolbox of population control. The logic of collective punishment has been to project domination in order to subdue a subjugated population through inflicting a steep price for its resistance to alien rule. In Gaza, this collective punishment has reached unbearable levels, hermetically sealed from the outside world by seventeen-year air, land, and sea blockade with no end in sight.” The situation in Gaza was described as early as 2016 by the Secretary-General as collective punishment for which as collective punishment for which there must be accountability. In the absence of accountability, Gaza is besieged and bombed. Massacres perpetrated for more than 140 days now and nearly the entire population forcibly displaced and at risk of perishing. Mr President, this prolonged repressive regime has dehumanized Palestinians, denying them the right to life, the right to safety, the right to even exist while confining and fragmenting them and their territory. The court is not facing isolated or individual acts violating Palestinian human rights, but rather the cumulative effect of systematic policies undoubtedly constituting a pattern of racial discrimination. Members of the court, the policies and practice of Israel amount to segregation with the existence in the occupied Palestinian territory of two entirely separate legal systems. These are not my words, these are the words of the Committee on the Elimination of All Forms of Racial Discrimination tasked by more than 180 states to fight this scourge of racial discrimination. Likewise, the UN International Commission of inquiry has described the situation in the OPT as legal regime of segregation. When it comes to determining that a measured policy or practice disproportionately affects a group, this court attributes considerable weight to reports of several UN organs and monitoring bodies and to the constant practice of independent treaty bodies. The findings of independent treaty bodies are a fortioro to be ascribed great weight when their findings are shared by the UN General Assembly, the Human Rights Council, Special Reporters, as well as by almost all the participants in the present proceedings. Members of the court, Israel's occupation has been replete with systematic exclusions and restrictions adopted with the purpose or effect of nullifying or impairing the recognition, enjoyment or exercise on an equal footing of human rights. As noted by the Special Rapporteur on human rights, and I quote, "The political system of entrenched rule in the occupied Palestinian territory that endows one racial, national, ethnic group with substantial rights, benefits and privileges while intentionally subjugating another group to live behind walls and checkpoints and under a permanent military rule." Without right, without equality, without dignity. Bailing evidentiary standard for the existence of apartheid. Apartheid exists in the occupied Palestinian territory. Twenty participant states expressly hold the same position, including victims of apartheid, South Africa and Namibia. As all states parties to the SIRD, Israel is under obligation to particularly condemn racial segregation and apartheid. Undoubtedly apartheid falls within the scope of discriminatory measures referred to in the UNGAA resolution requesting this advisory opinion. This court, as early as 1971 in its Namibia opinion, also confirmed that apartheid amounts to a flagrant violation of the purposes and principles of the Charter. Further, the ILC has listed the prohibition of apartheid as a preemptory norm, permitting no derogation. Applying the definition of apartheid, which reflects customary law, in both the 1973 Convention on the Suppression and Punishment of the Crime of Apartheid and the 1998 Rome Statute of the International Criminal Court, Israel's policies and practices in the OPT meet the evidentiary standard for the existence of apartheid. First, the existence of two or more different racial groups is present. International law determines racial groups by the subjective perception of the group that it has a separate identity. Judged by the standard, two distinct separate racial groups coexist in Palestine, namely the indigenous Palestinian population and Israeli Jews. Second, the establishment of an institutionalized regime of systematic oppression and domination by one racial group over another undoubtedly exists. As evidenced in the State of Palestine's written statement, Israel has in purpose and in effect elaborated through laws, military courts, violence, discriminatory zoning and planning and collective punishment system to subjugate Palestinians. They are confined in space and droids. They travel unsegregated roads, a phenomenon that even apartheid South Africa never knew. Third, the commission of inhumane acts is endemic. Israel subjects the Palestinians at unprecedented levels to inhumane acts as defined by these two conventions. Such inhumane acts include murder, forcible population transfer, massive arbitrary arrest, imprisonment and torture. And while the occupation continues, they are becoming more egregious every year. Finally, the inhumane acts are committed with the purpose of maintaining the apartheid regime and by it maintaining permanently Israel's illegal occupation of Palestinian territory. As was shown by Mr Reitler, the statements of Israel's highest government officials evincing Israel's determination to dislocate the Palestinian population annex its territory and maintain its system of colonial statement, settlement, all attest to Israel's intention to maintain an apartheid-based occupation regime permanently. In July 2014, Israel's then Minister of Justice declared, and I quote, "What's so horrifying about understanding that the entire Palestinian population is the enemy? They are all enemy combatants and their blood shall be on all their heads. They should go, as should the physical homes in which they raised the snakes. Otherwise, more little snakes will be raised there," end of quote. Tragically, this is just one of the many dehumanizing descriptions by Israeli officials of Palestinian children. Snakes, snakes, Mr President. For all the above reasons, the State of Palestine requests the court to declare that Israel discriminatory practices against the Palestinian people are tantamount to apartheid, which this court defined in its 1971 advisory opinion on Namibia as distinctions, exclusions, restrictions and limitations exclusively based on grounds of race, color or descent or national or ethnic origin which constitute a denial of fundamental human rights. This actually reflects the Palestinian reality. Mr President, members of the court, forty-seven United Nations experts have declared that if the occupation is not brought to an end, and I quote, "What would be left of the West Bank would be a Palestinian bantistan, islands of disconnected land completely surrounded by Israel and with no territorial connection to the outside world, and would be the crystallization of an already unjust reality: two peoples living in the same space, ruled by the same state but with profoundly unequal rights." This is a vision of a 21st century apartheid. This is apartheid. The Palestinian population in Israel stands at 20%. Hence, Israel's discriminatory treatment of Palestinians must be viewed in its totality. As Palestine and other participants demonstrated in their written statements, the system of racial discrimination extends to all areas between the Mediterranean Sea and the Jordan River. Furthermore, Palestine, Namibia and South Africa, together with a myriad of public figures, legal scholars, NGOs, concur that such discriminatory treatment amounts to apartheid. Even some Israeli officials admitted it. Although it might not be clear to the naked eye, by Israeli law, Jewish citizens of any country who have never been to Israel can automatically gain Israeli citizenship. Yet Palestinians refugees who have spent their entire lives in forced exile and in refugee camps are barred forever from returning to their homelands. Unfortunately, time won't allow me to expose the full extent of Israel's discriminatory laws, but I would only highlight that Israel has an extensive set of laws discriminating against Palestinians in every aspect of life. This was not left unnoticed by SIRD, which noted that the practice of segregation between Jewish and non-Jewish communities continues to be applied in Israel proper. A one-state reality of unequal rights, consolidating segregation and apartheid against Palestinians, is reflected in the inherently discriminatory character of the 2018 Basic Law, Israel, the nation-state of the Jewish people. Under this law, exercising the right to national self-determination in the State of Israel is unique to the Jewish people. Developing Jewish settlements became an Israeli national value, not only in the occupied West Bank and the Syrian Golan, but even in Israel. And I ask where? On which lands? The answer is on the lands where Palestinian citizens of Israel live, especially in the Galilee and the Nakab. An exclusive right of one group and complete denial of the rights of another. From the Jordan River to the Mediterranean Sea, if this is not apartheid, what is? Israel's measures, policies and practices against the Palestinian people are no less pervasive in the reach or less pernicious in their consequences than the institutionalized racial discrimination and segregation that existed in South Africa. And just like in 1971, the international community relies on this court to play its own genuine role to bring about an end to this glaring injustice. An immediate end to this illegal situation will bestow on the Palestinian people the fundamental rights to which they are entitled by international law, yet unfortunately they have been so unjustly denied. Let me conclude, Mr President, with a cry of desperation representing the countless victims of the ongoing Israeli atrocities as described by the Palestinian poet Murid Barghouti. "In my despair I remember there is life after death, there is life after death." And I have no problem, but I ask, oh God, oh God, is there life before death? Mr President, members of the court, I thank you for your kind attention. Mr President, I respectfully request that you now call Professor Sands to the podium. Thank you very much.
I thank Mr Nagim. I now invite Professor Philip Sands to address the court. We have the floor for him.
Mr President, members of the court, it is an honour to address you this morning on the subject of the Palestinian people's right to self-determination, the extended deprivation of this inalienable right in its permanent quest to exercise it fully. Fifty-three states and three international organizations submitted written statements to the court. Not a single one, not one. Not even Israel claimed that the Palestinian people was not entitled to self-determination under international law.
Mr President, the written statements before you offer no discordant note to the three core propositions the State of Palestine advances in these proceedings. First, the Palestinians are a distinct people. Second, as such, they enjoy the very same rights as every other people, including that most foundational of rights, namely the right to self-determination, to decide for themselves how they will live and organize, politically, socially, economically, in accordance with and subject to international law. As Professor Hirsch Lauterpakt put it in 1945, in the language of another age, "Freedom means," and I quote, "the right of self-government through rulers chosen by and accountable to him. And equality demands an equal opportunity of self-government and cultural development," end of quote. Third, the Palestinian people's right to self-determination has real and practical consequences. It is not an empty slogan. That right includes, but is not limited to, the right to control their own land and natural resources, the right to be free from demographic manipulations by any third party and the right to determine their own political status, economic development, their own futures. Mr President, members of the court, there is no dispute as to the right of self-determination of the Palestinian people. It has never been an issue, not since the time of the mandate. And this court made that clear two decades ago in its opinion in the war case, when it said loud and clear, "The existence of a Palestinian people is no longer an issue." What is before this court now is the ability of the Palestinian people to exercise that right and Israel's systematic and prolonged violation of that right. What does the right to self-determination mean in practice? How has Israel violated it? And what are the consequences of those violations? Mr President, members of the court, in its written statement, the State of Palestine explained that the right to self-determination comprises four specific components. First, the right to territorial integrity. Second, the right not to be subjected to demographic manipulations within that territory by a foreign power. Third, the right to exercise permanent sovereignty over its natural resources. And fourth, the right to be able to pursue its chosen economic, social and cultural development. The prolonged occupation, colonization and purported annexation by Israel of Palestinian territory with all the discriminatory and other unlawful acts territory with all the discriminatory and other unlawful acts have and continue to deprive the Palestinian people of each of these four distinct components. Let me start with the right to territorial integrity, so recently recognised and given effect by the court in its advisory opinion on Chagos and endorsed by an overwhelming majority by the General Assembly of the United Nations. This implements Resolutions 1514 and 2625. Yet Israel has clearly violated the territorial integrity of the occupied Palestinian territories through over more than half a century of belligerent occupation. As Mr. Reichler has described, it has purportedly annexed Jerusalem and the West Bank, and it has established hundreds of settlements populated by more than 700,000 settlers regarded as a permanent part of Israel. It has extended the wall that this court found to be illegal in 2004. It has confined Palestinians to enclaves. It has severed Jerusalem. It has restricted Palestinian rights of entry from the rest of the OPT. It has transformed the Gaza Strip into an impoverished enclave, a besieged, bombarded community severed from the West Bank and East Jerusalem. Its leaders have declared that Israel will be sovereign over all the land between the Jordan River and the Mediterranean Sea, and it has made this formal government policy. What’s the consequence of this? It is the acquisition of territory by force. It is the reduction and fragmentation, as you have seen, of the territory left for the Palestinians. And this is a manifest violation of Palestine’s territorial integrity, its unity, its contiguity, which are core elements of the right to self-determination. The General Assembly, the Security Council, the Human Rights Council have repeatedly called for the preservation of Palestine’s territorial integrity and condemned Israel’s acts as a violation of the right of the Palestinian people to exercise their self-determination. And so we urge the court to declare Israel’s 56-year occupation to be unlawful, to confirm, to take the words of your recent opinion in the Chagos case, that Israel is under an obligation to bring its presence on the territory of Palestine to an end and to do so as rapidly as possible. Mr. President, members of the court, I turn to the right not to be subjected to demographic manipulation. The Palestinian people, as you’ve heard and are aware, have been subject to a century of dispossession and displacement in manifest violation of their right to self-determination. This is in two ways. First, the forcible displacement undermines the integrity of the people, as the court has confirmed in the war and Chagos opinions. Between 1947 and 1949, during the Nakba, between 750,000 and 900,000 Palestinians were forcibly displaced. In 1967, a further 400,000 were forcibly displaced. Refugees are prevented from being able to return, and forcible displacements continue today. Entire communities in the West Bank, including East Jerusalem, and now before our very eyes on a daily basis across the entirety of Gaza. Second, transferring another people into the territory of Palestine is contrary to international law. It undermines the exercise by Palestine of its right to self-determination. Yet Israel declares that hundreds of thousands of unlawful settlers will somehow remain there permanently and forever. This is a demographic manipulation of the highest order. It is grave, it continues, it violates the right of self-determination. The law requires that such actions must end forthwith. Mr. President, members of the court, the third aspect is the right to exercise permanent sovereignty over natural resources, as recognised by Article 1 of the Two International Covenants and by so many UN bodies. The resources include land, fresh water, agricultural and mineral resources, including hydrocarbons. Israel’s control and purported annexation of the occupied Palestinian territories embraces both the land and its natural resources. For example, Israel systematically appropriates water resources. In the West Bank alone, the United Nations has documented prohibitions on Palestinians drawing waters from the river Jordan and grossly inequitable allocations of vital groundwaters as between Israelis and Palestinians. Israel pillages rock quarries. Israel prevents Palestinian exploitation of hydrocarbon deposits onshore and offshore. These too are manifest violations of the right of self-determination. Mr. President, members of the court, the fourth component of the right to self-determination is the right of a people to determine its own political status and direction and to pursue its own economic, social and cultural development of its choice. This is confirmed by a multitude of instruments and General Assembly resolutions. Yet Israel persists in prohibiting and punishing political expressions of Palestinian identity and nationhood. Flags are outlawed and attacked. Civil society organisations and political parties are declared to be unlawful. Leaders and elected representatives and civilians more generally, including so many children, are assaulted, exiled, imprisoned or killed. General Assembly resolutions and many treaties confirm that these rights exist under international law, and they’ve been systematically violated. The economic, social and cultural rights of the Palestinian people are suppressed by prolonged and unlawful occupation, by the purported annexation of the West Bank, including East Jerusalem, by the settlements, by the wall and its associated regime and infrastructure, by the blockade of Gaza, by the fragmentation of land, by the deprivation of resources, by the restrictions on freedom and movement of people and of goods, and by a multitude of other acts of subjugation and collective punishment. These acts and others have curtailed the access of the Palestinian people to livelihoods. They have made the country and the people totally dependent on aid. Cultural development too is under sustained assault. Access to religious and cultural sites is restricted, and the centuries-long historic status quo at Jerusalem’s Christian and Muslim holy sites, notably at the Al-Aqsa Mosque, is undermined and violated. Religious, social and cultural events are stopped. Schools and universities are besieged or just demolished. Cultural heritage is usurped or just destroyed. Writers, poets, academics are simply prevented from expressing themselves, and some, like the renowned poet Rafat al-Arir, have simply been killed. Religious leaders face intimidation, harassment and incitement. And so too it goes for Palestinian social development. The World Bank, the World Health Organisation, has described the health system in the occupied Palestinian territories as fragmented and fragile. Access to housing is destroyed by forced expulsions, demolition orders, seizure and destruction of property, discriminatory planning, violence and intimidation from settlers. In the Gaza Strip, the economic, social and cultural life of the Palestinian people has been decimated. After 17 years of blockade, the population is destitute. It is subjected to destruction on an industrial scale, now utterly dependent on humanitarian aid merely to exist. This continuing military assault today shocks the conscience of the world. Is it consistent with the right of self-determination, Mr. President? One only has to ask the question to see how it answers itself. The violence and restrictions imposed on Palestinians impact every aspect of Palestinian life. That’s Antad reporting in March 2003. And of course, today, the situation is even more grave. The violation of Palestine’s exercise of the right to self-determination is manifest and it is gross. In summary, Israel has arrogated to itself the right to decide who owns Palestinian land, who may live on it and how it is to be used. On Israel’s approach, it decides on the use of resources and allocations of benefits. On Israel’s approach, it decides whether Palestinians remain or return. On Israel’s approach, it decides how, if at all, Palestinians may meet, trade, teach, worship, live, love. And Israel wants more. Its current prime minister and government celebrate the denial of Palestinian exercise of self-determination, of sovereignty and statehood. They celebrate it. They claim a right to construct settlements in the Palestinian territory, and with pride they speak of the power to frustrate the Oslo Accords and Palestinian statehood, the ultimate expression, the ultimate expression of the right of self-determination. Mr. President, let us be blunt. Israel has sought to negate the rights of the Palestinian people to exercise their right of self-determination in all aspects, across all parts of the territory of mandatory Palestine. It has done so for decades, and it wishes to do so forever. Tragically, tragically, Israel celebrates the manifest violation of international law inherent in its prolonged occupation. Tragically, tragically, Israel asserts the right of national self-determination in the state of Israel, and I’m quoting, “is unique to the Jewish people,” under its own 2018 Basic Law. Tragically, tragically, Israel sets its face against the role of international law. No one in this great hall of justice is starry-eyed about international law, but it is what we have, and it is your role as judges of this court, the principal judicial organ of the United Nations, to affirm the place and the power of international law, to confirm the illegality of the occupation, to make clear that Palestine in all respects meets the criteria of statehood under international law with all the rights and responsibilities that implies. Mr. President, members of the court, the existence and exercise of the right to self-determination are not conditional. The right is a peremptory right. This is recognised by states, by judges of this court, by the International Law Commission, by commentators. And what that means in practice is that there is no derogation from the existence or exercise of the right. In Chagos, the court confirmed that Resolution 1514, which recognises self-determination, must be exercised without any conditions or reservations, reflects customary general international law. The only limitation on the right, the court has said, is that the free and genuine expression of the people concerned has to be exercised in accordance with international law. In Chagos, this court swatted away British and American arguments that alleged security concerns somehow trumped the right of self-determination and its exercise. And we trust that the court will dismiss the argument that somehow the Palestinian people’s right of self-determination is conditional upon a subjective determination by another state as to matters of its security. This right to self-determination includes the right of a people to form a sovereign and independent state. More than 140 states have recognised Palestine as a state with a population, with a defined territory, with a government being a party to multiple treaties, a state with rights and with obligations. Mr. President, members of the court, Palestinian statehood is not dependent on the approval of Israel. An occupying power does not have and cannot have a right of veto over the right of self-determination of the Palestinian people. The inalienable rights of the Palestinian people include the right of self-determination, national independence and sovereignty. What are the consequences of Israel’s violations of Palestine’s right to self-determination and its exercise? Professor Pele is going to address these matters, so I can be brief. As the purpose and effect of the occupation is the denial of the right of self-determination and the prevention, let’s be frank, of the solution called for by the Security Council, the General Assembly and the vast majority of states of our world, premised on the existence of the two-state solution, the occupation is illegal and must be brought to an immediate, unconditional and total end. The right of self-determination requires that UN member states bring Israel’s occupation to an immediate end. No aid, no assistance, no complicity, no contribution to forcible actions, no money, no arms, no trade, no nothing. All UN members are obliged by law to end Israel’s presence on the territory of Palestine. Period. In concluding, Mr. President, members of the court, may I respond to the unfortunate point made by a small number of states, that an opinion from this court would somehow negatively impact future negotiations? With great respect, the truth is the very opposite. First, the court has confirmed already that Palestinian people have a right to self-determination without derogation. The existence and exercise of the right to self-determination is not and can never be a matter for negotiation. Second, the function of this court, of these judges, of you, is to state the law, to spell out the legal rights and obligations that will allow a just solution in the future in conformity with international law. The political context is totally irrelevant. The legal questions in Namibia, in the war case, in the Chagos case, all had a political context, but the court did not blink. It has never shied away from drawing the consequences of the right to self-determination. In Chagos and in Namibia, the advisory opinions have been significant and positive in their outcomes and effects. By identifying the applicable legal principles and then applying them to the facts, the court performs a most significant, uniquely significant role for protagonists and for the international community as a whole. With great respect to my friends from the United States and Britain, it is the very opposite of what they have written. The function of this court in interpreting and applying the right of self-determination of the Palestinian people can only assist in a solution based on the law by setting out the parameters required by the law to resolve the matter. A forthright advisory opinion from this court makes a resolution more likely, not less likely. Mr. President, in 1945... Mr President, in 1945, Professor Hersh Lauterpacht wrote that self-determination is an enlightened and beneficial ideal to which the formation of states must conform if both justice and the peace of the world are to be secured. That is the beating heart of self-determination, the idea that a people must be able to determine for themselves their lives and their futures. And Hersh Lauterpacht personally knew of what he spoke, and we know that he was right. Israel's actions, as you have heard already today and will hear in the coming days, are manifest grave and continuing violations of the right of which Lauterpacht spoke. And we invite this court to so declare, to help bring to an end this affront, to allow the Palestinian people to determine the conditions under which they will live in their territory, under their government, under the law, and to do so fully and to do so forthwith. That's what international law requires, no more and no less. Mr President, I thank you for your kind attention, and I invite you to call Professor Pele to the bar.
I thank Professor Sands, I know it's not Professor Pele, to address the court. Vous avez la parole, monsieur.
Over to you, Professor Pele. Mr President, distinguished members of the court, my colleague summed up in the limited time which they had the principal internationally wrongful acts to be attributed to Israel. Those have been more lengthily and precisely described, not only in the written comments of the State of Palestine, but also in those of the vast majority of the 56 other states and international organizations who have participated in the written proceedings. So it falls to me right now to succinctly recapitulate not these egregious violations themselves, but the legal consequences arising from them. These consequences are the very subject matter of those two questions posed by the General Assembly to the court, since both of them relate to the legal consequences of the prolonged occupations of the OPT. Were I to restrict myself merely to commenting on the list alone of the internationally wrongful acts of which Israel is responsible, were I to do that, I would exceed by far the time at my disposal. May I thus be allowed, distinguished members of the court, to refer you to the passages in our written comments and those of the majority of states and international organizations participating in the written proceedings, who set out these consequences in particularly relevant and careful fashion? Those references will be listed thanks to the diligent efforts of the registry in the reports of this hearing, and can also be seen in the overview table, which you can find under tab AP1 of your judges' folder. It's rather a long table, I have to say. I'm going to say a few words about that in a minute. In any event, this listing calls for a number of comments, both preliminary and general. Firstly, as emphasized by the participants in the written proceedings, who are all in agreement on this point, the legal consequences for Israel arising from the applicable rules are primarily those codified by Articles 29 through 37 of the 2001 ILC Draft on State Responsibility. These deal, of course, with the full reparation of harm caused by actions or emissions of Israel, but also with their cessation in separal from the duty to carry out those obligations breached and the obligation to offer guarantees of non-repetition. Another point on which there is a very broad consensus relates to the nature of those obligations breached. Now, generally speaking, the participants to the proceedings consider that these are serious violations by Israel of obligations arising from the peremptory norms of general international law, whose definition and consequences are partially codified in Articles 40 and 41 of the Articles of the ILC. This is the case principally for the prohibition of acquisition of territory by the threat or use of force, the obligation to comply with the right to self-determination, a number of rules arising from humanitarian law or the protection of human rights, and specifically the prohibition of racial discrimination and apartheid. Let me point out en passant that this enumeration overlaps strikingly with the non-exhaustive list of norms that the ILC had previously designated as having this status of peremptory norms, which were annexed to the draft findings on peremptory norms of general international law, use Coggan's. My colleagues have shown this at length, and I will revisit this again solely to illustrate the particular consequences which flow from the very nature of peremptory norms. Let me clarify, however, that these peremptory principles you can see in the table on screen are set out in greater detail, excuse me, in the document that you can find under tab AP33 in your files. The reason why it's helpful to single out these obligations is on account of their specific consequences first, and this is the starting point. Given that they are peremptory norms, they are binding upon, they are binding upon an independent of the consent of their recipients. Secondly, unlike what some states would wish you to believe, you can't interpret them as derogating either from the rules of just Coggan's nor from the Charter of the UN, which constitutes the supreme norm, creating both the Security Council and the court, and which, of course, binds them both. Furthermore, in no circumstance can exclude, no circumstance, excuse me, can exclude the wrongfulness of any act of a state which does not comply with an obligation arising under peremptory norm of general international law. This principle is codified by Article 26 of the ILC Articles of 2001 and is recalled by the equally important Draft Conclusion 18 of ILC Drafts on Peremptory Norms of General International Law. And finally, Israel can't hide behind alleged circumstances precluding wrongfulness to justify the violation of its obligations, which are peremptory and intransgressible. Let me add that these considerations are equally valid mutatis mutandis regarding the obligations flowing from the resolutions of the Security Council, and first and foremost, of course, from those decisions taken under Chapter 7 of the Charter. And you can see the relevant list under tab 3 of your folders. In no case, in no case may negotiations call into question the norms of just Coggan's, one of its main consequences, as you well know, is the voiding of any treaty if, at the time of its conclusion, it conflicts with the peremptory norm of general international law. So the conclusion of negotiations may in no case be contrary to the peremptory norms, which I set out just a few minutes ago, nor contrary to the binding resolutions of the Security Council, though these resolutions generally rehearse the former, applying them to the specific context of our case. Mr President, contrary to what the US implied in their written comments, the holding of negotiations is not necessary for us to draw the consequences of Israel's violations of its international obligations. Once violations has been established and attributed, and in this case, this is beyond dispute, as and indeed is undisputed, the responsibility of their author exists ipso facto with all attendant legal consequences. Now, to deny this, some states, a few states, have invoked inter alia one sentence quoted out of context, taken from your opinion of 9 July 2004 in the Wall case. I quote, "This tragic situation can be brought to an end only through implementation, in good faith, of all relevant Security Council resolutions, in particular Resolutions 242 1967 and 338 1973." End of quotation. But, but all you said there is that the State of Palestine, which is ready to do so, and Israel, which appears far from it, must apply the resolutions of the Security Council. And they must do this both during and independently of any negotiations. And in your opinion on the Wall, you never considered that the so-called negotiating framework prevented you from ruling on the legal consequences of its illegal construction. May I add that neither Resolution 242 nor Resolution 338 refer directly to the responsibility of Israel for its practices and policies towards the Palestinian people. Only the second one of those, the Resolution 338, calls for, I quote, "calls for negotiations between the parties concerned under appropriate auspices aimed at establishing a just and durable peace in the Middle East." So it's not a question of responsibility, and this question is as topical as ever. Now, sticking to the Wall opinion, you called the General Assembly's attention, and I quote you here, "to the need for these efforts to be encouraged with a view to achieving as soon as possible on the basis of international law." I repeat that, "on the basis of international law, a negotiated solution to the outstanding problems and the establishment of a Palestinian state existing side by side with Israel and its other neighbors, with peace and security for all, for all in the region." Let me underscore "on the basis of international law." Another consequence of the peremptory nature of the norms breached by Israel is that Israel cannot rely on any circumstance to escape its responsibility, be it on the grounds of some consent purportedly given by the State of Palestine, or by invoking self-defense or necessity. No more may Israel justify countermeasures as a response to an internationally wrongful act that it might impute to Palestine. As the ILC noted quite rightly in its commentary of Article 26 on its Articles of State Responsibility, I quote them there, "For example, a state taking countermeasures may not derogate from such a norm." The plea of necessity cannot excuse the breach of a peremptory norm. End of citation. The State of Palestine does not deny that, to practically implement Israel's obligation towards it and the Palestinian people, that negotiations could be useful, indeed necessary. But as far as peremptory norm obligations are concerned, this would only be to settle practical issues. There is no way that such negotiations or the perspective of such negotiations could serve as a pretext to exonerate Israel from its responsibility or lessening their consequences or delaying their implementation.
You can, yeah, thank you. Yes, thank you. I apologize.
Distinguished members of the court, as you will recall, not only the State of Palestine, but also a number of other participants, the obligations incumbent upon Israel to draw the consequences of its internationally wrongful acts are unconditional and immediate. That's the case for the obligation to put an end immediately and in conditionally to and completely to the occupation of Palestinian territory, including East Jerusalem. This is an occupation, as you well know, lasting almost 57 years. And I say, the obligation to put an end immediately, in conditionally, and completely to the occupation of Palestinian territory, including East Jerusalem, an occupation lasting almost 57 years, violating inter alia the prohibition of the acquisition of territory by the threat or use of force, the right of the Palestinian people to self-determination, the prohibition of racial discrimination and apartheid, and those fundamental principles protecting human rights and arising from humanitarian law. Now, it's also the case for the obligation to cancel all legislative or regulatory texts aimed at annexing East Jerusalem or any part, any part of the territory of East Palestine in disregard of its territorial integrity, as well as those organizing the exploitation of its natural resources. The obligation as well to put an end to the policy of apartheid and racial discrimination, of which the Palestinian people as a whole is victim, both in the OPTs and in Israel. This is also the case of the obligation to rescind all measures aimed at modifying the demographic composition of occupied territory, including Jerusalem and the status of the holy places. And in the same spirit, the prohibition to establish diplomatic missions in Jerusalem. The same applies to the obligation to dismantle settlements in the OPT, or the obligation to ensure the return of Palestinians expelled from Israel and from OPT and their descendants, and to restitution properties confiscated, be they property, both real and personal property, to their Palestinian owners, and to pay them, the owners, inter alia appropriate compensation. And further, the obligation to search for, prosecute, and punish the authors of war crimes, crimes against humanity, including apartheid or genocide or other egregious violations of human rights. May I be allowed to refer you, members of the court, to the table you can find at tab 61 of your folders, which summarizes on the basis of the replies of both the State of Palestine and a number of other participants in the proceedings, those legal consequences on which you are called to rule. Mr President, the secondary obligations, if you will, that I've enumerated thus far are the consequence of Israel's practices and policies pursued in persistent and egregious violation of the obligations of peremptory norms of general international law, and in first place of its illegal occupation, its denial of Palestinian people's right to self-determination, which is the source of all these evils. Were Israel to effectively and swiftly acquit itself of these obligations, Israel would be partially re-establishing the situation which existed before the wrongful act was committed, without that, of course, adequately repairing the immense harm caused to the people of Palestine since the 1948 Nakba. To the extent that this harm cannot be repaired by restitution, Israel must discharge two other obligations consistent with the principles codified in Articles 34, 36, and 37 of Articles 2001. Israel must compensate the victims of its acts and give satisfaction in reparation of the damage caused by its internationally wrongful acts in the form of recognition of its breaches, expressions of regret, formal excuses, or by any other suitable means. I won't say more about compensation, except to recall that reparation must be entire, and that it is essential for those and that it is essential for those Palestinians who are direct victims of Israeli atrocities inter alia on account of the infringement of human rights and humanitarian law. And in particular, I quote, "the applicability of the Geneva Convention relative to the protection of civilian persons in time of War of 12, August 1949, to all the Arab terrapies occupied by Israel in 1967." End of quotation. This is a Security Council resolution. I continue, but in the framework of the instant proceedings, distinguished members of the Court, it falls to you to affirm the principle of compensation and not the quantum. However, you can be more precise regarding the satisfaction that the State of Palestine is entitled to expect from Israel, especially given that the Security Council and the General Assembly have already made specific and legally binding findings in this respect. The Security Council in 1967, I quote them, talks about the acknowledgement of the sovereignty, territorial integrity and political independence of every state in the area. This appeal to Israel remained without effect, but ought to have, and indeed should more than ever, encourage those states who have not yet done so to follow the example of the hundred and thirty-nine states who have already recognised the State of Palestine. In that self-same resolution, the Council calls for, I'm quoting them again, "the guarantee of the territorial inviability and political independence of every state in the area." Every state. That includes, of course, without doubt, the State of Palestine. Now, these decisions, and these are binding decisions, were rehearsed, reiterated on numerous occasions since the important Resolution 2334 of Security Council of 23 December 2016, which is particularly important. And because it's so important, you will find it under Tab 6.4 in your folders. It has to be said that Israel paid no attention to this either. Now, Mr. President, if ever there was a situation in which these guarantees of non-repetition foreseen by Article 30 of the Articles of the ILC apply, it is this case. For almost fifty-seven years, despite the repeated appeals of the General Assembly and the Security Council of the UN and numerous other international organisations, be they NGOs or governmental, Israel has obstinately stuck to its policy of oppression and discrimination against the Palestinian people in breach of the most fundamental principles of international law. And by its practices, has continually exacerbated the situation with the unconcealed objective of making impossible the realisation of the Palestinian people's right to self-determination. Let me point out once again that the Security Council has for many years expressly called upon Israel to discharge all of these obligations, as you can see in the table under Tab 6.2 of your folders, which summarises all the relevant resolutions of the Security Council. And the General Assembly insisted time and again on, I quote them, "the urgency of achieving without delay an end to the Israeli occupation that began in 1967." End of quotation. And of course, as well to bringing to an end the other violations of Israel and its obligations, whose urgent nature it emphasised by saying "immediately." Mr. President, given that it is legally impossible for Palestine to renounce requiring Israel to comply with its peremptory obligations, the Cogan's nature and the seriousness of their violations by Israel have major consequences for third states. Now, they are set out a minima in Article 41 of the ILC Articles. The Security Council and the General Assembly have repeatedly called upon all states, I quote, "not to provide Israel with any assistance to be used specifically in connection with settlements in the occupied territories." More broadly, they have equally reasserted the obligation of the UN and all states not to recognise the situation resulting from the unlawful occupation of Palestinian territory, not to provide aid or assistance, to make the distinction between occupied Palestinian territory and Israeli territory, and to comply with and enforce international law. This implies that the responsibility of Israel should be implemented and that the resolutions of the Security Council should be applied by practical means. Excuse me. Mr. President, principles set out in Article 41 describe some of the essential and indispensable consequences of any serious violation of the obligation of the peremptory norms of international law. Such norms are rare, it is true, but Israel has seriously and systematically breached most of them and continues so to do. So Israel must assume the consequences and it's up to the Court to remind Israel of them and to specify the contents thereof in the light of the facts of the case. Once again, because I don't have the time and because it erari yadem omnia diabolicum, I humbly request you to refer to the relevant paragraphs of our observations, in other words, of our comments and written statements. I'll merely recall in telegraph style that third states, starting with the UN, must prohibit the provision of Israel with any military or technological assistance which could be used in the OPT, including Gaza, of course, to perpetuate or reinforce its occupation and the regime of racial discrimination, apartheid instituted by Israel. This prohibition covers all authorisations for any type of arms trade which could be used to such ends. Third states also have to aid and assist Palestinian people, including refugees from the time of Akbar up until those who have fled recent Israeli atrocities, giving them the means necessary for their subsistence inter alia via competent international organisations, and that will surely include UNRWA. They must, third states still, they must refrain from any form or economic relations or other relations with Israel involving the population or the natural resources of the OPTs without the express agreement of the legitimate representative of the Palestinian people. Third states also must ensure that their own nationals do not pillage nor untually appropriate these said natural resources. Third states have the obligation to cooperate with a view to effectively realising the right of the Palestinian people to self-determination. They must also prosecute and punish all individuals responsible for serious crimes under international law, including their own nationals, before national courts or by cooperating with the ICC. Now, there is a point on which I'd like to more especially draw your attention, distinguished members of the Court. This relates to paragraph three of Article 41, which specifies that it is "without prejudice to further consequences that..." I repeat, "without prejudice to further consequences that a serious breach, as defined by Article 40, may entail under international law." End of quote. As from then, the obligation of third states and the UN don't stop at these duties of cooperation and non-recognisation. As Palestine explained in its written comments, they have an obligation, both customary and conventional, to pursue, punish or extradite the authors of violations, be they war crimes, crimes against humanity, crime of apartheid, not to mention acts of genocide committed against the Palestinian people, whose plausibility you recognised in your order of 26 January. Moreover, you expressly recalled in your opinion on the wall, I quote you here, "all states, parties to the Geneva Convention relative to the protection of civilian persons in the time of war, are under an obligation, while respecting the UN Charter and international law, to ensure compliance by Israel with international humanitarian law as embodied in that convention." This obligation covers all crimes, all crimes committed by or at the instigation of Israel. Distinguished members of the Court, I think that no case that you've had before you, be contentious or advisory, has raised so many very, very serious questions as those on which you are called to all today. The number of participants in these proceedings, fifty-seven during the written phase, fifty-four who will be participating in these hearings, bears witness to the importance of the stakes in play and to the conviction of the international community of states as a whole, that the Court has a crucial role to play to help put an end to the dramatic situation created by Israel's breaches of their most intransgressable principles of international law. Like a large number of states and international organisations, Palestine detailed in its written observations the consequences of the very numerous and serious violations of international law committed by Israel, including most of its most fundamental rules. Palestine considers that it falls to you to guide the General Assembly, the UN and all states to ensure that Israel finally complies with those obligations upon it stemming from its repeated systematic and continuous breaches of the most fundamental principles of international law, which, let me repeat, all these principles, all these violations, have been brought about by the prolonged occupation of Palestine, which is surely the mother of all its violations. Your opinion, distinguished members of the Court, will be a very precious guide for Palestine. The State of Palestine is fully aware that you can't just wave a magic wand and put an end to the Israeli occupation and the tragic situation of the Palestinian people, but Palestine is persuaded that by firmly and precisely setting out the legal consequences of Israel's persistent violation of the rights of the Palestinian people, you can, by your opinion, make an appreciable contribution to putting an end to this terrible injustice and work for a just and lasting peace, allowing each state in the region to live in security. End of citation, in accordance with the Security Council injunction of sixty-four years back. And at the same time, you will fulfil your primary function to ensure the compliance of international law that your Court administers. So, thank you very much. I would be very happy if you could call His Excellency Dr Riyad Mansour for the final submissions.
I will give the floor to His Excellency Mr Riyad Mansour. You have the floor, Excellency.
Mr. President, honourable members of the Court, I think you have in your folders the full text or the original text of my speech, but I tried, in light of the lateness of the hour, I shortened it further. As we gather here in this great hall of justice, in the Peace Palace, we are reminded of these simple words, "peace through justice, peace through law." The General Assembly brought the question of Palestine before the Court because our people, the law and peace are in jeopardy. The clarity of the law as it pertains to this question is only matched by the evidence of its continued breach by Israel. As we address you today, this breach has reached its most inhumane levels. More than two million Palestinians in Gaza are being pushed all the way to the border, to the very brink. Palestinian children, women and men consumed by disease, despair, destruction and death, which are spreading like wildfire. In the rest of occupied Palestine, settlers rampage and terrorise. No village, town or city, no community, no sanctity spared. Israeli leaders no longer feel the need to hide their intentions. They speak openly of getting rid of the Palestinian people, one way or another. They defy the law and the law is barely fighting back. For Palestine, the law continues to be only a measure of the severity of breaches rather than a catalyst for action and accountability. What does international law mean for Palestinian children in Gaza today? It has protected neither them nor their children. It has not protected their families or communities. It has not protected their lives or limbs, their hopes or homes. We are a proud and resilient people that has endured more than its share of agony. It is so painful to be Palestinian today. How could we be just subjected to such loss and injustice, such lawlessness and humiliation time and time again? What does international law mean for a nation bestowed with inherent rights but enjoying none? It took seventy-five years for the UN to commemorate the Nakba, our violent dispossession, displacement from our land and denial of our rights and existence. And we are seeing it happen all over again. Massacres, millions forcibly driven towards the unknown, tents, starvation, deprivation and dehumanisation, enabling one people to impose all of this on another. Palestinians under occupation in Israel as refugees and in the diaspora, all they ask for are their rights and to live in freedom and dignity in their ancestral land. For seventy-five years, the Palestinian people have faced attempts to push them out of geography and indeed out of history. And it goes on and it will go on forever unless and until international law is upheld, unless and until the unlawful occupation of Palestine ends. Mr. President, members of the Court, our right to self-determination was recognised in the context of a mandate one hundred years ago, yet simultaneously negated by the actions of the mandatory power. The question of Palestine was passed on to the United Nations at the time of its inception and has remained on its agenda ever since. In the aftermath of the Nakba, the United Nations admitted Israel to membership while emphasising the need... while emphasising the need for it to respect Resolution one eighty one and one nine four concerning the Palestinian state and the territory allotted to it, the international status of Jerusalem and the right of return of Palestinian refugees. Israel recognised these resolutions to secure its admission only to renege on them as soon as it was admitted. Ever since Israel became convinced that the new realities imposed by the use of force would override the obligations arising from the rule of international law without any consequences. In nineteen sixty seven, the Security Council emphasised the inadmissibility of the acquisition of territory by war and called for the withdrawal of Israeli armed forces from territories occupied in the recent conflict. Instead, Israel started to colonise the land. The General Assembly in Resolution three zero zero five called upon Israel to desist the annexation of any part of the occupied territories and the establishment of Israeli settlements on those territories and the transfer of parts of an alien population into the occupied territories. Instead, Israel formalised its annexation of Jerusalem and other parts of the West Bank and poured hundreds of thousands of settlers into our territory. In nineteen seventy four, fifty years ago, the General Assembly reaffirmed the inalienable rights of the Palestinian people in Palestine, including the right to self determination without external interference, the right to national independence and sovereignty, as well as the inalienable right of the Palestinians to return to their homes and property from which they have been displaced and uprooted and called for their return. Instead, Israel denied the existence of the Palestinian people. The United Nations has consistently reiterated these calls, yet Israel has consistently rejected them, intrinsing its violations rather than ending them. So here we are. Though the law is absolutely clear, it is being trampled. Without accountability, there is no justice and without justice, there can be no peace. Israel must be made to bear the consequences of its illegal conduct rather than reap the benefits. After seventy five years, justice can no longer wait for the day Israel has an epiphany and suddenly decides to reverse course and commit to the law and U N resolutions. Our journey in the search for justice has brought us before you, before the International Court of Justice, following the General Assembly's decision to seek your guidance. We call on you to confirm that Israelis' presence in the occupied Palestinian territory is illegal. I repeat, it is illegal. That the presence of its occupation forces and settlers is illegal and that its occupation must thus come to an immediate, complete and unconditional end. I repeat, an immediate, complete and unconditional end. This occupation has served as cover for Israelis' colonial designs, the acquisition of Palestinian territory by force. In nineteen eighty, the Security Council reaffirmed the overriding necessity to end the prolonged occupation of Arab territories occupied by Israel since nineteen sixty seven, including Jerusalem. If the occupation was deemed prolonged in nineteen eighty, how should it be characterised today, nearly forty five years later? I repeat, if the occupation was deemed prolonged in nineteen eighty, how should it be characterised today, nearly forty five years later? And if it was an overriding necessity to end it, then what exactly is it now, I ask you? Mr President, members of the Court, the United Nations admitted Israel in nineteen forty nine. Seventy five years later, Palestine is yet to be admitted as full member of the United Nations. I sat in the General Assembly next to representatives of liberation movements, next to the A N C and SWABO. We stood side by side with them as they achieved their independence and took their rightful places among the community of nations. They cannot accept that the Palestinian people are left behind any longer, indefinitely denied their innate rights. That is why many of those states will appear before this Court in the coming days. Mr President, members of the Court, based on the U N record, you should have no difficulty arriving at the conclusion that the occupation is prolonged, that Palestinian territory has been annexed, that our self determination has been denied and that the people of Palestine have been subjected to systematic racial discrimination. The occupation itself cannot be distinguished from these breaches. They are not merely the result of the occupation but are rather the foundation upon which the occupation rests. Rooted in the singular unlawful goal of maintaining permanent Israeli dominion over the occupied Palestinian territory and relegating the Palestinians, it has not been able to displace to inferior status in their own land, in perpetuity, deprived of their inalienable rights. A finding from this distinguished Court that the occupation is illegal and drawing the legal consequences from this determination would contribute to bringing it to an immediate end, paving the way to just and lasting peace. In closing, honourable judges, the State of Palestine appeals to this Court to guide the international community in upholding international law, ending injustice and achieving a just and lasting peace, to guide us towards a future in which Palestinian children are treated as children. Not as demographic threat in which the identity of the group to which we belong does not diminish the human rights to which we are all entitled. A future in which no Palestinian and no Israelis is killed, a future in which two states live side by side in peace and security. The Palestinian people only demand respect for their rights. They ask for nothing more. They cannot accept nothing less and nothing else. The future of freedom, justice and peace can begin here and now. It is within your power to give the clearest statement possible on what the law is, what it requires and what it means in practice for all members of the United Nations. We trust in your wisdom, your fairness and your dedication to justice and the rule of law. And I thank you very much, Mr President.
I thank Excellency Mr Mansour. This concludes the oral statement of the State of Palestine. Your statement brings to an end this morning's session. The Court will meet again tomorrow at ten a m to hear South Africa, Algeria, Saudi Arabia, the Kingdom of the Netherlands, Bangladesh and Belgium. The sitting is adjourned.